All right, I'd like to call the Village Board of Trustees for Cottage Grove to order on Monday, April 17th. It is 6:30 on my watch. We are holding this as a hybrid meeting, meaning that we are on Zoom as well as in Village Hall. There is a Zoom link at the top of the agenda, and there's also an audio call-in number as well. With that, we have a quorum, and the agenda was properly posted. And we'll start with a Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next then is Public Appearances. This is public's opportunity to speak. If you are from the public and wish to speak, we just ask that you share your name, your address, your municipality, and hold your comments to no more than three minutes, just in case we have a number of folks who would like to speak. All right, with that then, we had one submittal from Jennifer Simics, from 1-809 North Windsor Avenue, just indicated that she's a resident, put a plug in for the library, and did not wish to speak. So we'll keep that for the public record. And we'll move right on to reports from Discuss and Consider our meeting minutes from our Village Board meeting held on April 3rd. Any questions, comments, edits?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a first from Heidi, a second from David. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor then? Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Then we move right into our reports from Village Boards, Commissions, and Committees, starting off with Emergency Preparedness Committee. Who's the lieutenant?
He's on.
He's on.
I'm here, Doug.
All right. Take it away, Matt.
Uh, excuse me. Yeah, the only thing that we have, as we do on an annual basis, is we have to approve the Emergency Preparedness Plan. This came before the committee last week, and we're making no changes this year to the plan. So it would be pretty easy. The only thing that we're changing is the dates. When it comes to the rest of the agenda, I forgot to mention to the committee, but Hydrate again is going to donate $2,000 to the Emergency Preparedness Plan, or excuse me, the Emergency Preparedness Committee. So we'll have that in our funds to go forward with training, or, you know, any other needs that the committee finds. Then we talked about 2024, possibly enhancing the budget for emergency preparedness, now that we're kind of out of the infancy stage of our committee, and getting equipment and things ready to prepare and support in case an emergency was happening.
Any questions for Matt? All right, thanks, Matt. Next then, we have Public Works, Properties, and Stateability. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion that we approve-
Thank you, Sarah.
-the Emergency Preparedness Plan as indicated in the agenda.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Motion second. Any fur-
Just one point of order. I don't know that we need to approve it. I mean, it's, there's no changes other than a continuation of the existing plan. So I don't know that any action is needed. But either way, I guess, probably no harm either. But we didn't put anything in the packet for you to-
To review.
Review there, so.
So no action needed. Point of order then, Larry. Nothing to do then, correct?
So we withdraw motion, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because we didn't have the plan in the packets.
All right.
I mean, you could dig through it, through the Emergency Preparedness Committee packet. Thanks, Matt. All right, now we move on to Public Works. Heidi, please.
Thanks. So we met on the 11th, and we talked about kind of unique village property that we have that is kind of stuck between properties on the west side of Main Street and in Forest Ridge on, what's the name of the street? Anyway, it's like surrounded by properties. There's no access to it, but there are play equipment, built structures, things on this village property, as people have just sort of encroached on it over time. So the department will be sending out letters to have people remove those structures from that property, and we can continue the discussion from there. So if you hear something about that, you can feel free to contact Brian, JJ, with questions on that. We've discussed it a couple times at Public Works. We also talked about the message board use guidelines. As you've noticed, it's up for civic organizations' use. We did have some requests from businesses and religious organizations, so we wanted to make sure to clarify who should be using the message board for civic organizations, community events. So we kind of put together a little plan on how people could request to use that. We talked about the road maintenance project plan for the next few years. Then we went through reports. We have had a lot of work at MSB in the last couple weeks, putting up solar panels. So I guess if, Josh, if you have those pictures handy, if you want to share those, that's the, I guess, there's some neat photography showing panels.
See those?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so this is basically where over a lot of the staff are. They've had to endure over the past handful of days, and last week or so, here these panels go up. So the front door is, you know, kind of down here, where my hand is in the parking lot. This is, you know, we meant to put them over the area that, if this building was ever expanded, this was kind of the area that was going to be left intact on the roof, so less panels would be disrupted. This could be added to in the future, and it could even be moved or rearranged if the building did need to change. So those will be up. And we haven't got a few specific parts and equipment yet to kind of get it all up and running, but all the panels are installed. Any questions?
Looks like that wasn't taken today, though. Nice and sunny out there.
There's probably a little bit of snow probably still up there.
Thanks. And then we're scheduled to meet again first Tuesday. I believe that's May 2nd.
All right, any questions for Heidi? Then we'll move on to Utilities Commission. Chris?
We met on Wednesday, April 12th. We actually had someone from the public come. It was Dave Conklin, representing Bryn Mawr Church. I guess it was discovered that they don't have a water meter, and apparently it's a PSC requirement that they have to have a meter installed. And he's worried that it could cost them up to $10,000, which they can't particularly afford. Right now, they're on a, they've been on a fixed flat rate since 2002. So what he seemed to be hoping was that we might be able to grant a waiver. I don't think it's under our authority to do that. So we're going to consult Trilogy for their professional opinion and see if there's anything we can do. But it looks like it might end up that they just need to have a meter installed. Then we talked about the village's payment system. Previously, we had talked about Piag- software called Piagov, and Cameron looked into another one called Community Portal, that was called. And that seemed like it was actually a better deal. It integrates well with all the village payments. And so we passed that unanimously to approve Community Portal as the new, excuse me, payment system. Talked about a, whoops, sorry, our two GPS collector. A lot of this goes over my head, so I'm sorry. I'm just going to try to read this here. That cost was about $12,000 for that, to make, to ease some of the work for some of the utility people. We approved that unanimously. There was also a discussion about a valve exerciser and a sewer cleaner. I accidentally opened Zoom. I just bought this thing, so I'm sorry. I'm getting used to it still. Click on it. There we go. That price was a little bit higher. It was around $91,000. So we tabled the approval of that, so we can get a little bit more information for next meeting. We talked about and approved up to $45-ish thousand for plans for the new lift station. That was unanimous. And engineers report, there's some trees by well two over on Donna, was it? Is that where it is? By Donna? Some trees that were struck by lightning, which fried some of the electronics in there. So they're trying to get that fixed. And I believe that is it. Did I miss anything? Good?
Yeah, just kind of fill in some holes there. For the $45,000 that was approved for the lift station, that's actually a significant reduction from the initial plan. I can't remember the exact total, but it was like $300,000 or $400,000. They're going to scale back the design work to make it more customizable if a developer wants to come in here. I think the initial fear was if they put, you know, spent all the money and they wanted to change the use of that land, you might lose some of the benefits of that. And then I have a point on the agenda a little bit later to talk about the, what that means, the online payment provider means on the village side.
And our next meeting is May 10th at 5:00.
All right, thanks, Chris. Next then, we have Plan Commission. We have a couple of Discuss and Consider items on our agenda tonight. So we met on the 12th of April, covered an application from Miracle League of Dane County, which is one of the Discuss and Considers for a site plan amendment for installation of canopies and seating system. Bill Schultz and company came to that meeting. I don't know if they're here tonight on Zoom. No. And I believe it's Greg walked the Plan Commission through this. The structure itself is an actual, a fairly elaborate structure, and they're working with structural engineers, because they're putting up multiple canopies to cover most of the seating areas, able to withstand, you know, high winds and all that other good stuff. They'll be on for the season, hopefully, and then be taken off for the winter season, just like we do for our canopies. Then we also covered a site plan application for First Choice Dental, the approval to construct about approximately 10,000 square feet dental office right next to CVS on Court Crossing. And then we discussed the Plan Commission tasks. Just started the initial discussion from the housing study. So we've got more, more talk about there, but that was just, again, to kick that off with the commission. So with that, the commission did recommend both the Discuss and Considers to the board for consideration, and we can take them, since Bill's not here, we can open it up for the Miracle League with Aaron, I think.
Yeah, I think you covered it pretty well. They keep adding more and more players every year, more and more volunteers, more and more people coming out to watch them, so it's all exciting stuff. And there were no concerns at the Plan Commission with the project, and no conditions recommended.
Okay. Josh, anything to add?
No, we didn't have any conditions either. They, it's good to note that they do a lot of the brain structures and canopies there, but they had an engineer, structural engineer looking at it all, and plans and staffing together, so they really seemed like they had all the ducks in a row.
Any questions from board members?
Do you know when the canopies are supposed to be done?
Hopefully before the season starts, what their hope is. So they're under the, under the wire. Yeah, early May. So, yeah, they were-
Eager to get going?
Yeah. In fact, they already have, they had the footings being bored that day of the Plan Commission, so they were kind of at risk a little bit, but.
I'll make a motion to approve the application from the Miracle League of Dane County for a site plan amendment to permit installation of a canopy over the seating area at the Miracle League Field in Bakken Park.
Second. First by David, second by Chris. Any further discussion? Having heard none then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. All right. Then do we have anybody from First Choice Dental? Okay. All right. Is Charlie going to walk, walk the board through? Okay.
Hi there, this is Charlie McCall. Do you want me to go through the project real quick and introduce it for you?
Yeah, that'll be helpful, Charlie, because some of the, obviously, a number of the board members haven't, haven't seen this quite yet.
Absolutely, yeah. So as we've submitted, you know, we're looking to put a new First Choice Dental project there at 649 Court Crossing Road. It's approximately, you said, 10,000 square feet. It's a brand-new dental clinic there. Last meeting, we went through and talked about any concerns with the entry and then signage. We addressed, I think, both of them. We didn't have any questions to that. Since then, we've gone ahead and had all the revisions completed per Josh's and Aaron's feedback. And then recently did that to Aaron today. I believe Josh has been tapped on that as well. And we've also gone ahead and done our DNR paperwork and filed that this time.
All right, thanks, Charlie. Aaron?
Yeah, I don't have too much more to add. It's a good use for the site. There was some restrictions put on that site when CVS came in. Part of the deal with the developer that there couldn't be any competing businesses on that lot. And CVS kind of sells everything, so it put some real restrictions on that lot. So a service like this is a real good fit. Nice-looking building. We'd recommend approval with the conditions in the Village Action Report as opposed to the staff report, because we cleaned up some of the conditions related to the entry point that were discussed and kind of resolved at the Plan Commission.
All right, thanks, Aaron. Josh, anything to add?
Aaron, I heard it all. The access point was the one thing that we really discussed the Plan Commission, and we just modified it.
Board members, questions?
Just curious what the plan is in that northwest corner of that lot. Just a green space landscaping. Just curious what, what'll go back there.
Yeah, the proposal there is just more of the green space, so obviously we've got some grading to do. There's a high point, so bring that down. And, yeah, just green space.
Okay. That's going to be the only thing on that parcel then?
Yeah.
The grading is pretty-
Yeah, well, I guess the only thing that confuses me is the sign thing. It says no more than one monument sign is permitted. They can use the multi-tenant sign. What's the point of a multi-tenant sign if there's only one tenant on that?
Well, because it's-
It's already there.
Yeah.
I guess.
Yeah, the CVS has just CVS on the side.
Yeah.
Now it'll be multi-tenant.
If they ever wanted to change that, would they be able to?
I don't know what the deal is with CVS. CVS put it in, and then it was supposed to kind of represent the whole block.
I might add, at this time, our intention is to use that sign, then have secondary signage on the building itself. That's part of the reason why, you know, we had the argument to keep our site entry right off of the Court Crossing Road, is just for weight-bearing purposes inside. It's where the monument sign's located.
Other questions, comments from board members?
I would make a motion to approve the application from First Choice Dental for approval of a site plan to construct a new approximately 10,000-square-foot dental clinic located at 649 Court Crossing, with the conditions as laid out in the Village Action Report.
Second. All right, first by Heidi, second by David. Any further discussion? All right, having heard none then, all those in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. All right, thanks, Charlie.
Yeah, thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.
All right, that was it for Plan Commission. Next, we have Parks. If there's no question for plan. Heidi?
Yep, thanks. So this item's coming from our previous meeting, which I did already report on, but we needed to gather some more information before we brought it to you. So I'm excited about this opportunity to provide AEDs accessible in all of our parks, plus the other locations listed in the memo. So I'll turn it over to Sean to talk a little bit more about that.
Yeah, thanks, Heidi. A month, two months ago, I reached out to Chief Lang about getting just a couple of AEDs at North Lawn Park for softball and Fireman's Park for baseball, and he kind of turned, turned me towards these AED cabinets. And it, again, just, I put some information in your, in your packet, but these cabinets are 100% weatherproof, would be heated in the winter. If anybody were to need to use one of the cabinets, they would just come up to it, dial 911. And in working with not just Chief Lang, but Chief Archibald, as well as Chief Gary, once they called 911, the dispatcher would give them a code for that particular AED. They would enter the code, open the, open the door, take the AED out, and then begin doing the necessary steps. And in the, in the process, obviously, 911 has been dispatched at that point, too. So they can bring, obviously send the ambulance on the way, and, and things would hopefully proceed as, as planned. So we just started looking at not just the two locations, but we thought about putting them in all of the parks. And that's kind of how we graduated to this point. Really excited about it. There are obviously a few parks that don't have shelters, so we're working, we'll be working with Alliant to hopefully use a light pole and get these in every single park. Yeah, Chief, anything to add?
No, I just think it's unique how this whole process came together, in that you asked for two AEDs. We had a conversation. My phone brought up a story from Akshar, because Google listens. And we went from there, and just have a really good program put together.
So then we turned it over to Cameron and said, how can we pay for this?
Yeah, and we are really, with the amount of AEDs that are, that are proposed to purchase, I recommended doing a combination of ARPA and capital projects funding. Part of the reason why this, this wasn't on last meeting's agenda and this meeting's agenda is I kind of wanted to see how things shake, shook out for the end of 2022, as well as the first couple of months here this year. And with the current circumstances, I think this is what I would recommend from an allocation perspective. Well, well within, for ARPA, recommended $15,000 be spent, and capital projects 35. And that we're starting to get towards the end of the ARPA bucket, about $40,000 to $45,000, if no other projects go under cost. That would be after this $15,000.
Chief, how often do you have to replace them?
These are brand-new AEDs, so they have a 10-year life expectancy. So, yeah, I would say after 10 years, we'll, we would look at that. I think Sean had some discussion of, maybe as opposed to all 10 hitting, at year 10, we would look a little sooner than that. There is going to be some component replacement with batteries and patches. But with this particular AED, the batteries are effectively over-the-counter lithium-ion batteries, and the patches are something that we use regularly, so we can work within our normal supply allotment to either maybe swap them out and limit that expense, or because we buy quantity, drive the price down a little bit. But the first setup should be, I think, two years at least is what we're going to get out of batteries and patches.
Thanks, Chief. Any questions from board members?
I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of the AEDs to be located in the village parks according to the memo and finances as laid out in the agenda.
Is there a second? Sarah, first. Brittany, second. Any further discussion? Having heard none then, all those in favor? Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Great. Heidi, anything else?
Uh, no, I reported the rest of the meeting last time, and we'll meet again, not this week, next week.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, moving then to reports from village officers. Larry, anything? Okay, that's good. Cameron?
The first item up for discussion is the, the corresponding budget amendment for the purchase of the AEDs. So that's just far as action.
I'd make a motion to approve Budget Amendment 2023-003 regarding purchase of AEDs. Second.
Motion second. Is there any further discussion? Having heard none then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstained? Motion carries. Next item.
All right, and I'll try to make this one quick as well. So previously, we came to the board with the online service payment solution, Piagov. And, and after digging into it and working with our accounting vendor, it, we didn't realize the sizable integration costs that we were going to incur for the initial setup. But then, our accounting software solution did recommend that they have their own software, own system. And what I found really beneficial about this solution is kind of that real-time integration with utility payments. And not only was it a robust utility payment solution, it really has that one community shop. If I want to pay my building permits potentially, utility payments, any kind of village payment, instead of having it be siloed how it currently is, as well as with the Piagov solution. So I really think this is, you know, one of the, the points that we had to get over is, okay, well, could they offer similar or cheaper rates than Piagov? And they actually came back being, you know, slightly beating the, the cost model for processing fees. I do, for those of you who are interested, if you like, there's an 18-minute video on it. Certainly don't need to watch it before you approve it, but if you're curious to see what the solution is, I can play that either now or after the end of the meeting.
He tried to push that video on us.
Nobody wanted to watch it. And one last thing. So the current cost to bring this, the implementation fee would actually be within the parameters of the, the finance budget currently. So this would not be asking for additional funds to implement this.
And what about staff time? Anything, training?
Um, so the one great part about this is we, as opposed to Piagov, since it's actually reading out of our accounting system already, there's no data conversion with like utility billing and bringing that stuff over. There will be, regardless what solution we would go with, some community essentially training. Things are not going to, if you're set on auto pay, it's not going to be auto pay. So what that outreach looks like, I would guess I'd challenge the, you know, first conversations with the utility commission to see, you know, how they want us to handle it, since that is kind of phase one in my memo. Phase two and three are much smaller, but more staff-intensive. But that just requires a little bit additional kind of phased out. My, my goal would be to have this completely implemented by first quarter 2024, all three phases.
Questions?
Make a motion to approve the new online payment provider as outlined in the agenda.
Second.
Motion second then. Any further discussion?
JJ, will you have a memo? JJ, will you have a memo or will you have like a, something letting people know? Because I've been getting questions about people, there are residents who thought we already made the change to payment providers and they're like, why am I still getting, why do I have to make multiple payments for 300? You know, I had somebody reach out to me and they're like, their water bill's $308 a month, so they have to make two charges. So like, hey, I thought we changed this. And I was like, I thought we did, too. So that's on me. But can we have some sort of press release or communication or something, just letting the people know, kind of updating where we're at?
Yes. No, we had talked internally about how we're going to communicate all the changes will be coming. And I think it will be valuable. Madison Water Utility changed recently and I've been incredibly frustrated for almost a year now, so I know what we're going to try and avoid. But yeah, we've been having those talks a little bit internally.
And so this would be, just to keep in mind, there is some time delay with this. So this would be third quarter billing received in, or due in September, due in October. So you're talking about bills not, not until late in the, later in the fall. And part of that is, you know, we want to do this right. So kind of working with Chris and working with utility commission and how do we get the word out there and make sure we don't end up with frustration from the community.
Which will be unavoidable, though. It's going to be, it's going to be a change. It's going to be frustrating, but we'll have answers for folks at least.
But people will be able to pay, like their taxes, using this also?
Yes. So at a high level, yes. Dane County is currently coming out with a robust kind of online new tax software. I believe the intent is to go completely away from if we are collecting online payments that the village actually doesn't, that the county will. What that works, how that works out, I'm not sure. But yes, similar to, you know, I, I use Hydrate as an example. So if they have five water bills and they have another invoice we send them and a building permit, they can link all of their accounts to their profile. And if they have auto pay or something, it'll pay all of those bills, not just utility bills. The kind of that more professional, you know, when we have developers say, hey, can pay this? And they're like, oh, how do I do that? Well, just quint it a little bit and hope it works in the current, current process.
Okay, thanks.
First. Any other discussion? Having heard none, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Anything else, Cameron? All right. Thank you. And then we move down to approval of vouchers. Any questions, considerations there?
Make a motion to approve the vouchers as presented.
Second. We have a motion second. Any further discussion? Having heard none, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Anybody abstain? Motion carries. Correspondence? Didn't have any. I don't know if anybody else has any. Then upcoming community events?
Earth Day is on Saturday. So we have Earth Day with your friends, rain barrels, compost bins, all their other activities that have ranged for all ages.
Youth Service Day at McCarthy Park on Saturday, April 29th from 9:00 to noon.
Any others? Despite the snow, we're starting to pick up in the spring and summer activities. All right.
I'm afraid that snow is my fault, John. I'm sorry.
Two.
Yeah, I was going to say something, Brian, but it didn't stick to the street, so you're okay. Then moving down to future agenda items. Anything we? Going to make something up? Okay. All right. Then I'll make a motion that we go into closed session. This closed session is regards to potential land acquisition in Tid number nine and the establishment of negotiation position. The Village of Cotters Row Board will enter a closed session pursuant, pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, Part C1, Part E, deliberating and negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or the conducting of other specified public business wherever, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Is there a second? I think it was Brittany. I don't know. Second by Brittany. Third by Heidi.